No.
Hector, I'm gonna do a sound check now. How is that? Alright, I'm gonna do a quick sound check since we're trying out new technology today. Counselor Byers, it might come in without echo for you. Beautiful. Alright folks, we'll give it just a couple more minutes here to let folks trickle in. Hello, everybody. One second. Trying to get my agenda opened up. There we go. We'll be started here. Hector, can I ask a quick favor? Could you pull up the PowerPoint for tonight? I am currently frozen on my screen.
Yeah, in one second, I'm doing some of my. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. I worked with two screens because of my computer teacher wife, and I still haven't mastered it after all this time, but someday I aspire to dual-screen expertise. So, everybody's ready to go. Jordan, did you get your technical things squared away there? Can you hear me okay? Jordan, can you hear?
Mayor, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, are you guys in the same room? I'm not getting any. Jordan, can you hear? She's the one I'm. Jordan, I'll get the meeting started as soon as I get it all clear from you.
Mayor, there's a technical problem with the computers that Jordan was using. She's gonna switch to her office in just a couple minutes to log in.
Thank you, Hector. We'll wait.
Okay, test number two. Can you all hear and see me okay? Perfect. Will someone mind speaking to see if I have any volume tonight?
Testing, one, two, three.
Okay, back to the old faithful. I was trying to get a new camera for you all, but you're still stuck with the double chin viewpoint.
Alright, okay. Hector, are you ready?
I am ready, mayor.
Okay, very good. Here we go. Let's call the Talent Council regular meeting of October 19th to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor.
Penamref.
Here.
Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Pastizo. I don't see Counselor Pastizo. Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Parta Miller.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. I haven't heard from Counselor Pastizo. How about you, Jordan? Yep, so that usually means he'll be here any moment, so, because he scoots home from work, and so that would be my best guess. Because he's very fastidious about that. Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Roll call, please. I mean, excuse me, Hector.
Mayor, I'd like to welcome Lucero Martinez, our new city recorder, to help me with this today. So I'll do the English portion. This is a question for the public. If any attendees need this meeting translated into Spanish, we ask that they raise their hands now.
Este es una pregunta para el público. Alguno de los necesitarían la reunión interpretada en español. Le pedimos que haces un manu.
We'll watch the attendees now, mayor.
Thank you, Hector, and thank you, Lucero. It's so great to have the team at it. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody? Hector?
I'm sorry, mayor.
Oh, okay. I thought I heard you. Raise your hand. Or call out. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on then to community announcements. Any community announcements? I have just one.
I have a couple, mayor.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and go first, Hector?
On October 22nd, that's this Saturday, there'll be a Day of the Dead race here in Talent. Currently, there are about 200 runners registered, so it looks like it's gonna be a fantastic event. October 22nd, the City of Talent and the Talent Police Department will hold pizza and pop with a talent cop at the Grotto at 4:30. And for the tree lighting, we've decided to hold the tree lighting on December 2nd. That's a Friday. December 2nd will hold our tree lighting at the Old Town Hall. And the next day, on December 3rd, we will be hosting the leaf drop-off with recology. That's all the announcements I have.
Thank you, Hector. Anybody else? For me, I wanted to clarify a point. We had a study session the last time we met. And former mayor from Phoenix, Chris Loos, asked me why we had not declared a potential conflict of interest based on the discussion item and the fact that I own a property in the burn scar. My understanding was that in a study session where there's no decisions made, that it's not necessary, and I realized after I got off the meeting that I probably should double-check that, so I called the Ethics Commission and clarified discussion we had early on about my house being one of 700 homes that had burned and there being a classification, et cetera, et cetera. And she did say that when there's a potential conflict of interest, you should declare it in any discussion. So I stand corrected on that and appreciate former mayor Loos's reminder. But also to say that she also suggested that I apply for a classification status as one of 700 homes that had burned. So I did put that application in, and I expected determination pretty soon, which predetermines that that I'm, that my home is a part of a classification of a large swath of homes. So I'll let everybody know when I get that determination letter. I'll submit it to the record. And again, when I'm wrong, I say I'm wrong, and I was wrong, so. And with that, I did mention to Jordan that I'd like to see on the agenda, a question on the front of the agenda, asking any and all of the council members if they think they have a conflict of interest, because another concern can be remembering to do, remembering to do that. So having that just be a question to be asked on every agenda. So I don't know if you need that as a discussion item, Jordan. It might be in addition to council rules as part of the order business. I don't know. If it is, I'd like to put it on the agenda. What are your thoughts on that?
Yes, quick clarification. Mayor, are you thinking just on every agenda, just a reminder of conflict of interest? Or on specific items, such as when we discuss urban renewal, make sure that we have a sub-item reminding conflict of interest?
Yeah, I think any land use issues that come up, I would just have it stated. You know, there are parts in the agenda where there's a reminder for me to ask that question, ask questions like that. So just, I don't know, I would leave it up to the council what seems the less, the least amount of burdensome, but probably the most careful to make sure that we remember to do that, and so we can either discuss it, or you can just propose something on another meeting or something, but what's your pleasure?
I'd love to think through it and propose on the next meeting if possible.
Sounds good. Okay, I appreciate that. So let's go ahead and move on to item number five, which is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, do you have any speaker request forms tonight?
Mayor, as of 5 o'clock this afternoon, we received two. One from Mr. Ryan Mallory and one from Mr. Chris Loos.
Great. Okay, so let's start with Mr. Mallory. Please come forward and state your name and your city for the record.
Yeah, my name is Ryan Mallory, and I live in Talent, Oregon. I'm asking for the council to discuss two important issues tonight under Agenda Item 11. My requests have been recently submitted in writing, and they're part of your agenda packet. The first subject is the Gateway Trailer Park. Over a month ago, Mayor Darby was informed by the Rogue Retreat Director that they would like to cancel the contract with the city. He mentioned that in a public meeting or a meeting with over 100 employees. That's very much public. If the current management plan is found to be unsustainable by Rogue Retreat, where would the funding come from to pay for a new partner? And especially if that partner will not work under the same financial terms. Also, when was the mayor going to inform the public of this potential gateway problem? The Gateway Trailer Park's goal is to bring back talent families who had survived the fire. There was once 11, and now we hear possibly only nine former fire victims living in the park. The park was then upgraded to include people with children in Phoenix Talent School District, and there are plenty of people living there that are neither of those, no children, and nobody that had experienced loss in the fire. So I'd like you guys to speak on that. The second subject is the relationship between the Mayor Micro Enterprise Solutions of Oregon, aka MISO, and the former director of Tura and interim city manager John Legarza. I took the mayor's advice, and I did some research and requested records. Some of those records came from Rogue Valley Council of Governments. January 10th, the city submitted a request for qualifications for the Tura Director. January 24th, then-city manager Sandy Spalaci submitted it to Rogue Valley Council of Governments for them to do the research. February 10th, the executive director job was published. March 20th, Rogue Valley Council of Government's statement was in the council of minutes saying that they could not find any of the candidates submitted, including Legarza, that scored even 50 points out of 100 relative to qualifications and experience. The council then definitely moved forward with hiring Legarza, while he was also working full-time at over $100,000 with Clackamas County. Also, Clackamas County notes his deep ties to MISO. The mayor then filed a campaign application that said she was unemployed at the time and hired by MISO. And she was hired by MISO, and the Southern Oregon MISO address was listed as her home address. Days after the filing, the mayor shared her new job position. Southern Oregon Director of MISO on social media, there is no, there are no agency records that can provide information about the relationship between the mayor, MISO, and John Legarza, the Secretary of State, Attorney General, Ethics Commission can't provide clarity. Only the mayor can provide clarity, and it's her ethical job to recuse herself and allow the council to review this situation in private. It's also the council job to, jobs to review questionable ethics regarding the mayor, John Legarza, MISO, and Talent Urban Renewal. So I beckon you to do that, those jobs relative to ethics that you were hired to do and voted in to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next request form, if I remember correctly, Hector was from Chris Loz.
Correct, and I do see him in the audience.
Great. Mr. Loz, please state your name and your city for the record.
Chris Loz, Phoenix, Oregon. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I want to address a tough issue and kind of a heartbreaking issue that relates to a letter that was sent some time ago from 10 talent employees asking Mayor Darby to resign. It really was courageous undertaking by the talent employees who stepped up and signed the letter asking to resign. I'm gonna submit the letter for the record to tonight's meeting and encourage everyone to read it. I'm gonna focus on one particular item in just a few minutes, but I wanna address the letter, which says that you, mayor, and council, this is a much previous council, but this does address to Eleanor Plamroff and the mayor, and it says that you were breaking their family, or this family. And it's the family of employees here in Talent that work together day in, day out. And it's heartbreaking to think about having to work in that particular environment. The letter says that we are losing police staff due to your complete lack of respect and lack of support from members of this council. You've gotten so wrapped up in social media propaganda that you cannot keep anything straight. It's a tough letter, mayor. I'm gonna come back to social media propaganda in just a moment. The letter goes on to state that you have spent more time over the years degrading and tearing apart city staff than encouraging and uplifting them, even in times of disagreement, is what the 10 employees wrote. You have proven with your words, you do not care about city staff with your words. You have proven you do not care about the people of this town. At the end of the letter, it says, "This letter serves to prove that staff has lost faith in you, and they ask you to step down as you no longer, as they say, demonstrate the ability to lead ethically nor efficiently." And the reason I'm bringing this up, Madam Mayor, because just the other day, you did the same thing on social media. You propagandized. You referred to this letter, and I'm quoting, as a falsehood. Can you imagine being the employees who wrote this letter? And now you're describing this letter as a falsehood? Tonight, I would like you to acknowledge that this letter is real. It did exist. It was written by talent employees. And if you feel the need, I'd like to see an apology from the employees for referring to this letter by them as a falsehood. It really must have hurt them to see that on social media. And it's a tough letter. It's a tough conversation. That's it for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other speaker request forms?
Mayor, I do not see any more in my email, although there are 11 attendees in the audience.
Does anybody, I typically will turn to the audience at some, at this point, and somebody wants to raise their hand, and okay, so no other speakers. All right, so the next item on the agenda is I'll just, we'll make one clarifying point before I move on to the next one, just because we do have an audience. It's in our council rules that we take speakers heard on non-agenda items. They're not agendized items, so we don't take up a discussion at this point. But we are, according to our council rules, but we are allowed to take up a discussion later in the agenda. And on this particular agenda, it would be item number 11. And on this particular agenda, it would be item number 11, other business on future agenda items. So at that point, if the council wants to address any of the concerns expressed tonight or any information that comes up in a non-agenda items, that's the point that we'll do that. Thank you for indulging me for a second. The next item on the agenda is item 6.1, appointment of members to the talent urban renewal, or excuse me, talent urban forestry committee staff report.
Yeah, so we currently have two vacancies on our urban forestry committee and we've received two applications for those vacancies. One from community member Daniel Colay and one from Derek Volkart. Both have had a conversation with the mayor and have been interviewed and recommended by the urban forestry committee. And so I am making the recommendation today that council affirms this mayoral appointment.
Any questions or comments on the staff report? Okay, Council buyers?
I'm just thrilled to see the open positions fill so quickly. And I move to affirm the mayor's appointment of Daniel Colay and Derek Volkart as members of the City of Talent Urban Forestry Committee for a full two-year term, beginning October 19th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to affirm the mayor's appointment of Daniel Colay and Derek Volkart as members to the City of Talent Urban Forestry Committee for a full two-year term, beginning October 19th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? I, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just wanted to say that I'm excited to have Derek back on the committee. He was one of the founding members. He has a strong background in forestry and a lot of knowledge of trees, but also has a real deep knowledge of city processes. And it's going to be great to have him back. And then I had only just recently at the last meeting met Daniel Colay, but just super excited to have him on board. He has a lot of really deep ecological knowledge, which is something I really value and has a real, a real understanding and appreciation of the habitat values associated with urban forestry. So it's, it's a, it's a great new chapter in the history of this committee here.
I want to add that one of the things that Dan, I was really pleased to, I mean, Derek Volkart is a known, he's a great servant, particularly on these issues. And I, on the forestry committee, I'm excited that he's going to be taking a role as a member, but I also wanted to mention Daniel Colay. I remember when he applied for a seat in, I think it was the Planning Commission. One of the questions I typically ask applicants is if, for some reason, another applicant was chosen, I think it was one seat and more than one applicant. If another applicant is chosen, would you be willing to serve on something else? And his answer was yes. To me, that always demonstrates, you know, a real commitment to want to serve talent in some capacity. And he's been demonstrating interest, showing up for meetings here in, you know, different kinds of meetings. I've just seen him being more engaged with our community. And I really value and respect that, and I just was so excited to see his application. And I just wanted to say my hats off to that kind of interest. I really, I was really impressed by him. So if there's no other comments or questions, I will entertain, let's see, we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Also, Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penemirov?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
And I see that Mr., I see that Counselor Pestejo has joined us. Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item 7.1, Department Reports Staff.
Great, thank you. And Hector, if you want to stop sharing screen for this one, this will be a verbal report tonight. I first want to share with you all the exciting news that our new city attorney, Dave Lowman, has joined us and he's actually here in the room with us. David, I'm going to turn the camera way high. Due to technical difficulties, Dave is hanging out with me tonight. Dave will be joining all our city council meetings moving forward, just to help out with parliamentary procedure and questions as they come up, as well as to stay engaged with city business. So welcome, Dave. Happy to have you here. Hector already emphasized this, but I want to emphasize that we're doing pizza and pizza and pop with a cop on October 26th. We have a lot of new faces and just wonderful folks on our force right now. I really want to welcome Divya Amasur, who is one of our newest hires. She's currently training up in Salem. I want to welcome Greg Ridenhour, who's a lateral from Grant's Past. He is, you should see him on patrols. He's doing kind of the leadership these days. Michael Sanchez is our newest addition. He is in field training right now, also a lateral. He'll be there at the Day of the Dead Race. And then Andre Shuan, one of our other newer officers, he has just exited his training and has only a few weeks left of field training. So looking forward to having him on full patrol. Other big updates I want to share on that West Valley View project, you'll see that there are some striping going down, which is great. We have issued the final punch list to the contractors. We are looking forward to that project wrapping up soon. It is leaf season, as you all know, Public Works is going to be spending the major chunk of October and November helping pick up leaves. December 3rd, we will have community leaf pickup day. We have hired a code enforcement officer in Doc. Some of you all might recognize Doc. He was previously our maintenance and facilities position. So he is the one that kept City Hall and Town Hall looking so good. So now that Doc is in the code enforcement position, we are a little shorthanded at Public Works. So we will be looking to be able to fill that position so that we're not putting too much burden on our team. And then last but not least, I also want to welcome Mike Oxendine to our team. He started last week as our hazard mitigation coordinator and has already begun the process of kind of evaluating our hazard trees, identifying which ones need to come down and then looking for grant funding to help us bring those down. So that was a lot of, I'm happy to answer any questions for things going on.
Anybody? Council buyers, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. This is all such wonderful news. Thank you so much, Jordan. I wanted to check back in. If I'm remembering correctly, this means now that as soon as training is completed for all officers, we have a full staff, once again, for our, our police department. That's fantastic, wonderful news. Thank you.
Anybody else? I think all of those creative solutions made a difference. Jordan, thank you so much for bringing them to us and deploying them. By bringing them to us, I mean bringing them to the City of Talent.
Yeah, big shout out goes to, of course, our police chief, Jen Snook, for just building an incredible team.
Okay, is there any other? All right, thank you for the great report and I welcome the board. David Blomman? Is it David or Dave? Do you prefer to go by Dave or David?
Dave, actually.
Okay, very good. David is. All right. The next item on the agenda is item 8.1, Special Use Permit, Day of the Dead Race. Well, excuse me, it's the consent calendar. So we have four items on the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar that you'd like singled out? For another, to be moved to the agenda for discussion? All right, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the urban forestry committee? Great. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Council buyers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penemirov?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is item 9.1, Consideration of Budget Appropriation for Hybrid Meeting Equipment Staff Report.
Mayor, I'm going to hand this one off to Hector and Hector, I'm happy to share PowerPoint if I, oh, I got it. Thank you. All right, Hector, all you.
Okay. Counsel, what you see in front of you is, it's been a very long process for us here, trying to bring you back to Town Hall in a hybrid format where we can still take advantage of, of having interested parties attend via Zoom. In the process, we've tried several solutions and the one we came to was, is in front of you now, where we were able to get in touch with, with the with the company out of Roseburg that installed the initial audio system that's currently in Town Hall. The, the company came in and assessed the current audio system and determined that we would be able to upgrade our current audio system with some video capabilities so that we could stream our council meetings from Town Hall to any kind of video streaming platform such as Zoom, YouTube, or even Facebook. The estimate came in at about 16,500. And currently, there's about $250,000 available in the general fund contingency or 500,000 in ARPA materials and services to pay for this, for this equipment and to upgrade and give us a capability to stream video online.
Sounds pretty exciting. Are there any questions? Counselor Penemirov?
So I see that the motion suggests a general contingency fund if the ARPA is available, does that need to be in the motion or is that just going to be an automatic thing?
Counselor, I would, I'm going to step in here real quick, Hector. The recommendation from staff is actually to just expend 20,000 from the 500,000 ARPA. Part of our tech issues today is we could not edit and re-save this PowerPoint slide. So staff recommendation is to expend 20,000 from the ARPA materials and services.
Counselor Penemirov, do you have another question?
I do, but let Counselor Byers go first.
Okay, Council buyers?
Just a few questions about the, the potential that this is bringing us for clarification. So we would be in in-person meetings. And for those who are not able or find it more accessible to participate virtually, would be able to in real time, should they choose, follow the meeting and potentially speak as needed. Correct?
Counselor Byers, that is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. And it would also be doing double duty by recording our city council meetings to be available for anyone to access to listen to.
That's correct. Various platforms offer recording directly to an account. So we, if we connect it to our YouTube account, we would stream directly through that platform and the video would concurrently be saved to our account. So it's, it provides us with the ability to archive as well. So it's, I think it's mutually beneficial.
Yeah, it sounds like it's creating an efficiency of systems as well.
Thank you for your questions. Excellent questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Penemirov?
Thanks, yeah. So I, I'm wondering a little bit about the, the equipment. I noticed there were seven monitors as part of that. And those monitors are for, what's it, it's the number of the council. So I'm thinking, is that, is that monitors for us to observe? Or do they have some other purpose?
Counsel Penemirov, the monitors are to view any documents, for example, now we're viewing this PowerPoint. It, whatever document would be viewed, it would be also displayed on your, on your monitor.
For the council and the mayor.
Correct. And so the seven monitors would be for the council and the mayor. We do have a TV, we do have a flat screen monitor that the council can view from, from the dais. After we've, we turned it on and sat in the chairs, we determined that it's, it's just not feasible enough for everyone to sit and view from, from each of the different angles that the dais is laid out in. And so the recommendation from the contractor would be to have monitors for each council member and mayor.
And if, if I could, I just want to follow up on the equipment as far as the camera. Is the idea that the camera, like many council meetings, it would just be sitting somewhere for the entire council meeting, just to give a, an overview?
It's my understanding that we would be able to program the camera with certain shots. So let's say, for example, the mayor was starting the meeting, we could program the camera in such a way that it displays her when she speaks. And then if a council member makes a motion, we pre-program the camera with a different angle that it would be able to zoom in and, and only, only crop in the person speaking. I hope that makes sense, but the, the the, the cameras would allow us for, for movement and for pre-programming of, of certain angles and or positions on the dais.
Well, I, yeah, I think that sounds really great. I think the, the problems that certainly I've had in the past of listening to other meetings is you're just, all you have is the audio. At some point, you're not even sure who's talking. So as long as that makes for something that's a lot more clear after the fact, I think that's excellent. And I'm assuming that you would also have a different camera angle for people addressing the council.
Yeah, thank you for following up, Counsel Penemirov. Yes, it would be an additional camera to capture the person speaking or addressing council and the audience.
Great, thank you, Hector.
The other, did I see Counselor Clark's hands up?
My question was same as Counselor Penemirov's. It's been answered.
Any other questions? Counselor Greider?
Thanks. I don't know that we've had many people take advantage of the translation at the meetings, but how would that work? Or has that been discussed?
Counselor Greider, that's a great question, and I think that we would have to find a different way to provide translation than what we've been doing during Zoom meetings. So that's something we would address on a later point. Although I would not, I would not, you know, not, I would definitely bring it up and address it with the city man, with Jordan and settle at a different time.
And I wasn't here when there were in-person meetings, so at that time, there, there just was not translation. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Counselor, I'm not aware of, of how that was conducted at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Hector. Let's move to, if there's no other comments or questions, let's go ahead and look for a motion. Counselor Penemirov?
Yes, I move to appropriate $20,000 from the ARPA Materials and Services Fund for video equipment for hybrid meetings in Town Hall.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appropriate funds from the ARPA, let's see, appropriate $20,000 for, from the ARPA Materials and Services. Is there any further discussion? Thank you for writing that down, Counsel Penemirov. Hector?
Mayor, I would like to add that the demand for hybrid services and, and equipment that help deliver that service are in high demand. The contractor that we've spoken to said that even if we order the equipment today, it would take up to three or four months, or maybe even half a year to have it delivered. So there are a lot of municipalities moving in this direction and it is the, 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 the known benefits of, of having hybrid meetings are, I think, evident. uh, the, 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 the known, um, benefits of, of having hybrid meetings are, are, uh, I think evident to all with the increased participation by our, our, uh, our residents. Uh, but I, I would like to make it clear that, uh, it's not something that would happen next week or even next month, that there is, uh, quite a bit of a delay to, to, due to, um, due to, uh, i- importing of equipment.
That's good to know. Thank you, Hector. I really appreciate it. It helps us, um, um, clarify our expectations. Any other deliberation? Counselor Brighter?
I just have a quick question. Would the, uh, company that's installing it help provide maintenance and support or is that something that staff needs to become an expert on?
Uh, it's my understanding that they would train us on how to use the equipment. Um, but as far as, uh, um, you know, troubleshooting any, any, uh, things that pop up, it would, it would fall on staff shoulders to, um, to flesh those out. Um, I've used several of the equipment that we're purchasing or we, we, we hope to purchase, uh, and so I have quite a bit of experience with the, with the terminals. But, um, as far as repairing it, uh, we'd probably have to take, uh, or allocate funds for repair and our service for, for future.
And that's great, that you feel comfortable using it. That's great.
And Counselor Stiola too, this is the same technology that both Phoenix uses as well as such a point. Um, and so I know there's a lot of collaboration that we can do across our jurisdictions to help work through all the kinks of having new technology.
Counselor Byers?
Um, yeah, I know staff has a ton on their shoulders and this is, um, an added layer. I'm wondering if we should look at allocating a little bit more funding to hold in reserve for something like seeking an independent contractor's assistance. If there are any sort of struggles that we hit within the first year of using the equipment.
Any staff thoughts on that?
No, I'm sure I think that's a great idea. If, if council is comfortable with it, I would just amend the motion to appropriate up to twenty-five thousand. Um, with the idea that if that is needed, we will have enough in the budget to do so. Um, but if not needed, then, um, it's money that can get rolled over into future budgets.
Can I ask a quick question about that, Jordan? Is there any technical support already built into the contract?
The technical support in the contract is really to help set up the system. Um, I think once it's set up and once we're comfortable using it, um, it would be us figuring out, um, if issues arose or contacting them for, uh, you know, maintenance and service.
So, um, should I entertain a, an amendment? Who made the motion? Was it? Yep, Penamriff?
Yeah, sure.
And then, is it okay with a second?
Yeah, so, so it's okay with me to amend to what we're doing is changing it from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, with the intention that, um, there would also be some, uh, perhaps an independent contractor to help support staff. Um, yeah, I, I'm fine with that. Do you need anything else in the chat for that?
Uh, so it would, I would just, um, actually, um, just if you'll just go ahead and make a, a motion to amend.
A motion to amend?
Yeah, we'll go that route.
Yeah, I, I moved to amend the amount to twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, up to twenty-five thousand dollars rather than twenty thousand dollars with the understanding that it would, um, help support, uh, staff with an independent contractor or however staff decides to use that money.
Uh, so, um, if, is that your motion?
Well, I moved, I think I just really need to change the amount.
Yeah, if you just move, move to amend.
Move to amend, uh, changing the amount from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to, uh, amend the original motion from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand. Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yes.
Counselor Brighter?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, Mayor.
Hector, now back to the original motion, which was to appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the ARPA Material and Services for video equipment for hybrid meetings in Town Hall. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yes.
Counselor Brighter?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
And Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Hector. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is item, uh, let's see here, sorry, I'm on two different screens. Item nine point two, uh, which is consideration of the return to in-person hybrid meetings. Staff report?
Yeah, so with the advent of us being able to host hybrid meetings with the, um, new equipment coming down the pipeline, thank you, council. This coming before us to also adopt hybrid meeting policies, just to help us guide how we interact and guide with hybrid meetings. These policies were first introduced to council on September seventh. Um, we staffed to get some feedback from you all and we tried to incorporate that feedback into the policies. I will highlight, you know, what the, the biggest feedback change was, was to allow for council members to participate via Zoom, um, when the situation needed. And so our takeaway from that was that, um, council members can be granted permission to participate via Zoom, just through council, um, motion, letting them do so. And then with the idea of let's limit how often that can happen, um, to five times per year, this is based off of the Ashland's model. And so what we have before you all tonight is we can either choose to further amend the draft policies which are in the packet, um, and then adopt, or we can move to adopt them as is, or we could make further changes and bring them back up at a future meeting.
Uh, Counselor Penamriff?
Thanks, yeah, I have some, out of the gate, I have a question about the languages and this might be a legal question. I, we're not using the word shall, which is, is usually interpreted to be binding. I'm wondering about the, the verbiage around, um, are expected to, um, specifically in the second paragraph. I don't know if you have that, uh, there as well, but, uh, where it says staff, um, is expected to, uh, city manager and recorder, if I remember. Um, you know, show up in person. And I just wonder how, how, how would we interpret that in terms, it seems like, you know, in, in cases where they, they couldn't traveling or, or whatever, you know, with the normal understanding, we would say like, oh yeah, you can, you can zoom in. So, cause we're using that phrase, um, for the city manager and the city recorder, um, as well as in the first paragraph. And, and I think before we talk about whether there needs to be a vote or anything, I think we need to understand expected to, that's the normal practice. Please don't, you know, but if you need to stay home, if you're sick or whatever, um, or if you're traveling, um, then, then you can zoom in. But that's, you know, please don't take advantage of it. It seems to be the, the implication. Um, so anyway, I would just want to invite you and perhaps Dave, um, our new attorney wants to, uh, come on, comment on, on what that, what that might mean.
I, Counselor, I really appreciate that feedback and rather than put Dave on the spot, though he's probably ready for it, because Dave has been all four hours as our city attorney now. Um, would love a chance to hear further feedback from you all tonight and then have Dave give a review of this policy, um, to provide some legal perspective before council adopts. Um, particularly as it behooves us of, of, we have some legal room for when we can return to in-person hybrid meetings. So would love to hear feedback tonight and then bring it back before you all, if possible.
Counselor Byers?
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if we maybe should consider including language specific for COVID exposures. Um, that, uh, especially as we're looking at anticipated waves for the fall and winter. Um, in a, a recent exposure, mm, for myself, it took a few days, uh, for me to test positive. And then following the, the guidelines as outlined by the CDC, I mean, it, it was necessary to quarantine for a specific amount of time. If we all as a council gather and are exposed, I feel like we should have a, um, a set policy in place for what we're doing next instead of trying to figure it out after the fact.
Any other comments or input? Counselor Brighter?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Byers and, um, I guess two things, um, I, and, and I haven't been here when we had in-person meetings and, and that also was, before COVID and masks, but, um, would it be, and I would assume that it would be okay if, um, if someone chose to wear a mask, if a council member wanted to wear a mask during the meeting, that that would be okay? Um, I don't know how it would pick up on the audio and all that. Um, and then, um, my second question was just to clarify, so we could or would, I, I know on the other, the proposal was to start in December, but obviously we're still discussing. Um, so in that case, the meetings then would just have audio recording and we would just wait until the video was in place, right? For hybrid.
Yeah, I think when we go back to in-person meetings, if it's before we receive the equipment to do the very sophisticated hybrid meetings, um, we would still work to have a hybrid meeting, but just with a less sophisticated system. So it largely probably wouldn't have a focus on people's faces. There might be some changes with the microphone, but we would want to figure out a way to still provide that recording and that access for folks.
Oh, sure. Then maybe just like a Zoom, you just have a computer there with Zoom or something. Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Counselor Byers?
Um, yeah, thank you. So I'm reading the notes you're taking, Jordan, and thank you so much for making it so we can all see the information you're, you're tracking. I think what you noted for what I brought up is fantastic, but I think it would be good for us as, um, part of our policies for meetings to have in place our expectations for people who may or may not have been exposed to COVID. Whether it, whatever that means and for how long, um, those expectations are in place.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Penamriff?
Thank you. Um, I'm a little bit unsure about, uh, the part that says that a majority of the members, um, will vote on whether, uh, an, a member can participate or not. I'm just, it, it seems to me that if there are, that there are guidelines, um, that people are expected to follow just as in rules of decorum, um, that that would be sufficient. I'm, I'm a little bit worried about, um, if, you know, I'm not sure that this would be a thing, um, but it, that this could be, um, be, could become a political tool, uh, in some way. Um, and, but on the other hand, I think I, I, I feel like that's kind of put in there as a safeguard to prevent, um, one member, for example, from abusing, uh, and, and never coming in person. Um, so anyway, I'm a little bit torn. I'm not sure if that was put in there as one of, uh, many possible mechanisms, uh, to prevent abuse. Um, I can understand somewhat, uh, the need to prevent abuse, but, um, I'm not sure that, that this would be, uh, my first choice as far as mechanism goes. And I, and I think I'm a little less worried about, uh, abuse, um, of people zooming in, you know, for every meeting. I, I'm not terribly worried about that.
Counselor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna repeat back to you what I heard, I'm not sure in a hundred percent, um, on what the comment is. What I'm hearing is the requirement to have council approval of someone participating via Zoom is a too high bar and would be looking for a kind of honor code, honor system of letting people make a choice of when they participate via Zoom or not.
Yeah, I, I, I think though the phrase honor code, um, uh, says it well. Thank you.
And just to double check me, should that be an honor code, but still include a, a maximum limit? Um, or that be honor code in general?
Yeah, um, as far as the maximum limit, I think that, you know, council rules can be, um, overridden, uh, by the council. Uh, in the case of say, uh, a council member was, um, you know, in a situation where they couldn't risk, uh, exposure and, and needed to participate by Zoom. Um, council rules could be overridden in, in a, in a special case. I think the, the number of five was designed to put some guardrails in there. Um, so I'm not, um, so I think my comment would be, I am not, uh, crazy about the, about the limitation of five times, um, per year. I'm not sure that that's necessary, um, but it doesn't bother me for the reason that we could, we could override it in, in a special circumstance.
Counselor Brighter?
Hmm, I, it might not matter now if that's being removed, but yeah, I was also confused about that. And I, my question was going to be when, um, does that motion happen? Like, is that right before the meeting and then the call-in counselor is just prepared to be there if it's approved? Or, yeah, I also was just a little bit confused about that. Um, and then is it based on their reasonings or, um? Yeah.
I have a comment on this. I feel like, um, it's, uh, not necessary to have both parts of that language. To me, it looks like an either or. Um, I think if you limit people to five meetings, it doesn't, it doesn't necessitate a motion to approve. Um, you, you have a, it is, it's already approved, um, via the, the council rule. Um, if that, if, if the limitation is gonna be there. So in other words, I don't believe that once it's approved as part of the council rule, it needs to be approved additionally at each meeting. Um, but if, uh, it, if it's the, um, Zoom limit that is the sticking point, then, um, striking the Zoom limit uh, would make sense, in which case I would, uh, recommend, uh, a motion to approve because I think, I'm at that point in time, you are tracking the number of, you know, the, the amount of participation, um, it live. Um, so, uh, it looks more like an either or to me and, um, I would leave it to the pleasure of the council to decide, um, if they agree, A and B, um, which, um, which, which rule they want to adopt. Um, I agree with Counselor Penamriff. Um, it's built into our rules that all council rules can be overridden with a motion, so it seems kind of moot, but it's just me. I think, I think I appreciate the fact that it's expressing an intention, but, um, yeah, it doesn't seem particularly, um, uh, useful is the word that comes to mind, but.
Yeah, and I'd love to just add a couple of thoughts too, just so that you guys know where, where these are all coming from, kind of the intent behind these changes. One, recognizing the council would still love that flexibility of being able to attend via hybrid when they can and, and in person when they can. Right, I will say that in talking with other city managers and talking with other jurisdictions, there's a lot of richness that comes from communicating and discussing in person, not only as a council, but also in interacting with community members face to face. And, and we all know we've had a lot of calls from community members to return to in person. And so I really want to encourage an environment where we are encouraging folks to attend in person to our city council meetings. Um, you know, and the flip side of that too is, is you also all, as council members, are volunteers in this role. Um, and when it comes to a point in your life when, you know, you are sick or you are traveling, I also want to encourage just the healthy balance of life of, of not attending that city council meeting. Um, it's just a, as a good representative and health practice, um, to be able to balance life a little more. I think we all recognize that COVID has taught us that balance is necessary. And then the third intention is really beyond just the logistics for us as staff of having council members who are online at the same time as in person. Um, just makes for a little more complicated sharing of information and, and conversation. Um, so I will absolutely, I'm, I'm hearing what you're all saying tonight, just have to stay flexible, but recognize this may need to be addressed if we get to a point where we're not able to have the impacts or connections that we want to have in our meetings.
I'd like to add a clarifying point to your point, um, and that is that the first people to ask for these meetings to go back And that is that the first people to ask for these meetings to go back live was the council. So I think that's important to recognize, although. When you build council rules, it's not necessarily for just, you know, the council that's sitting, so. I do think the intention is more about the future, but but. You know, I look at it when I look at the rule. Limit, I I I ha- I tend to look at it through a lens of a council who's anxious to get back to the dais, so. That's probably what drives my thinking a little bit. Counselors.
Thank you. I'm I'm supportive of the limit as much. For it to be expressive of our own commitment to being there in person. And engaging in person. I do think it is important to be as clear as possible about the potential flexibility. Mainly because. We are all so lucky to be able to participate in person. For various reasons. And I think about the unforeseen things that can impact anyone at a moment's notice. Or people who are dependent on someone at a moment's notice that requires them to remove themselves. From gathering in public for the health or safety of either themselves or someone else, and I think it's important. To hold that flexibility in place to be as inclusive of as many people as possible and as many perspectives as possible and life experiences. And I think it's important to say that for the record.
So just to double check what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from council tonight. Is that. Really to remove the change, the track change language that you see all before you remove the red language. And have it be that really. Mayor and council members are expected to participate in person for hybrid city council meetings. But they have. Nothing about language on the fly, but to let council members make the choice of when to to be on hybrid without the need for either council consensus or without any. Limit on the number of times that that can be done.
Counsel Penomraff.
Yeah, it's not super important to me, but I do think I heard support for participation by Zoom is limited to five times per year. So rather than perhaps what I heard was rather than. Remove all of the red, just leave the participation by Zoom is limited to five times per year. And and the reason that doesn't bother me too much is is because in in cases where somebody is, let's say, taking care of somebody sensitive for the entire year. We could just, we could just give them an exemption, but it kind of sets some guardrails on it.
Thank you. That clarity helps me.
Certainly, my input was for one or the other, and and I have no. No consideration for one or the other. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with Counsel Penomraff. I think limiting to five times per year is fine and and sort of. Quantifies our intentions that people are gonna attend when they're able. And and then I would also support, yeah, dispensing with the language about. A council motion. In in every event that seems unnecessary.
And thank you for the feedback. And since we're on this topic, I just wanted to share that. Counsel Pestezo did text me that he did have to step away for a family emergency. Just that you all know that is why he's not present in the room anymore.
Thank you for that, Jordan. All right. Are there any other comments? I just want to say I really appreciate the depth of the discussion. These rules will determine. How how this brand new tool will be used and it's really. Just really thoughtful. Consideration here. So if there's no further discussion, you you're you don't need a motion. I'm gonna call Hector here in a second. You don't need a motion on this, do you?
I do not need a motion on this. I would love just to get the pulse if council's interested if we can figure out. A hybrid way to to start December in-person meetings. If that's a general, I'm getting general nods. Okay.
You know, before we before we get too too further along, we do have an audience member that I'll bring forward to speak on the item. Hector, is that what you were flagging me?
Yes, Mayor. Derek Manzi raises his hand during this topic.
I see it too. So let's go ahead and bring Derek Manzi forward. State your name and your city for the record.
Eric Manzies City of Talent. Can you hear me? Uh, so I'm actually commenting on nine point one. Sorry, I didn't get my hand up quick enough. I wanted to hear everything that. Council had to say about it beforehand. I do like that you guys. Brought up the idea of putting a little extra funding in there for troubleshooting. Issues, but with my experience in IT background as well as. Doing IT for City Phoenix, City of Jacksonville. I would stress this highly to Hector, Jordan, anybody else that it. Pertains to to have some sort of support contract. With the company that's providing all this equipment. Because if things go sideways, they can go sideways in a in a really bad way. And I'm not sure who your current IT contractor is, and maybe they can have some sort of relationship with that. Vendor, but to enter into some sort of contractual relationship with them. Is really the best way to go so that you're not on a paying for. Troubleshooting on a case-by-case basis, which is going to cost you a lot more money in the long run. So I just wanted to throw that in there. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. Okay. So Jordan, do you have everything you need to proceed?
I do. I just did a double check on the consensus, just so I can help Hector as we start to figure out solutions. We will be shooting for a in-person. Hybrid meeting. First meeting of December. Okay, great.
Right, are there any? So that matters concluded. Let's go ahead and move on then to. Item ten point one, overview of monthly financial reports staff.
Great. I'd love to invite up our finance director, Tessa Delain, to walk you through this agenda item.
Right. Good evening. I'm here to share with you a brief overview of the new financial reports that have been included in your council packet. This information includes budget budget to actual reports. Cash investments in a debt service recap. And a check register that you already receive on a monthly basis. Next slide, please. There are seven budget to actual reports. The first one is a consolidated report, which includes all of the funds. General Fund, Parks Fund, Street Fund, the SDC Fund, the Capital Improvements Fund. And the Water Fund, and these reports include high-level snapshots. Actual versus budgeted resources and requirements of all the funds. They include a narrative and a graph, and there's a glossary that's included in the last page of the report to assist with terminology. Next slide, please. And how to read the reports. On the left-hand side of the budget to actual is the category descriptions. And the next column is your current year-to-date. Which is the amounts that are collected or expended since July 1st of the current fiscal year. And then the total budget is a total adopted budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. The next column is the total budget variance, and that's the total budget minus the current year-to-date amounts. And then there is a percent column on the far right, which is the percent amount yet to be collected or expensed in the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. Also included is a cash investments and debt service recap. We'd like to have you like to share with you the cash balances that we have in our bank. What balances we have in our local government investment pool or any other investments that the city might make. We also include interest rates to know what our what our earnings are. Also, we have included a debt service recap, which includes. A consolidation of four bond issuances. We have a loan from Safe Drinking Water for the tap in a tie. And then we have a safe drinking water loan for the reservoir. The debt service includes. The how much we are charged for interest. It has the principal amounts with the information on any payments and also it includes. There's a couple of balloon or prepayments that are due, and we'd like the council to know about those as well. And do you have any questions? Then please know that this is a work in progress, and if you would like to have any additional information included in your packets, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Are there any questions? Great. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
So item ten point two is consideration of agreement for Greenway Path Emergency Restoration. Staff report?
Yeah, so Jackson County has received two point one million dollars in federal highway funds. Um, to help restore the Bear Creek Greenway in the Burnsville. Um, Jackson County has contracted or is actively contracting with ODOT. To be the one to provide that restoration of that Bear Creek Greenway area. As a reminder, it was ODOT that did the first pass of debris removal. Um, in that Bear Creek area, so this is an extension of what that debris removal project was. The safe talent, we have five parcels that are in the project area. And so by signing onto this agreement, we will be granting ODOT access to those parcels to carry out this project for restoration on the Bear Creek Greenway. And as a reminder, we currently are working with the Freshwater Trust. Who is doing a she as part a stream shading project during in our Burnsville area for part of our Bear Creek and talent. And then the Rogue River Watershed Council will also be starting a project helping with our floodway management down there. The county is in contact with both those projects and they're meant to be complementary, not competitive. And I'm happy to answer any questions specific to this agreement or to the project itself.
Counsel Clark?
Yeah, do you know what the spatial parameters of this project are?
I do not know what the spatial parameters are. Part of the contract that Jackson County is signing with ODOT is to create a specific project plan. Including those parameters.
Great, so it's not built into the. To the federal money. Okay, that's that's great. It's good to hear.
I know I asked this earlier, Jordan. When when we discussed it during our meeting, I. I wanted to know if there was any input that. The city will be able to give, putting this. Plan together, and you had mentioned that maybe the new. Position with hazard mitigation might be able to do that is is that do I did I understand that correctly and I and I just wanted to mention that for. Other interested parties that might be.
Yeah, I think, you know, talent is able to provide an input up to a point for this project. It's mostly. Mostly just granting ODOT that right of way is really what they're asking for at this point. You know, my assessment of this project, my recommendation on this project is really any cleanup that can occur in our Bear Creek area, including additional tree removal of. Of trees that are still dead that we had hoped to come back that aren't. Clearing of other brush or installation of any native plants is a good project and can help us. Move forward with our city goals and visions for that area. And if we ever want to implement products of our own to enhance our specific area of the Greenway as well.
Any other comments or questions, Counselors?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we have staff capacity to outline of. One who is responsible for what parts of which projects, which organizations, and then a brief. Like a bullet pointed list of what they're working on to be available on the website. I'm sure we will have lots of community members with questions of all sorts, and it might be really helpful to have questions start there.
Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that input and is something that we can work towards.
Thank you.
Counsel Clark?
Yeah. Uh, I spoke with. John Spees from the Rogue River Watershed Council about this today and. And if, you know, this is a really great resource and opportunity to do a lot of. A lot of great work. You know, the the details always matter, and so it's it's my hope that ODOT will be drawing upon the local expertise and local practitioners. As they. You know, design language for an RFPs or 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 what have you that that they will. Utilize the locally ecological expertise. In this area to make sure that. You know, the treatments that are that are being done are most effective and to meet the goals and preserving. Preserving habitat values wherever those opportunities exist. I have some hesitation about. Unnecessary or concerns about unnecessarily removing trees that are labeled hazards that maybe actually aren't because. Because standing snags provide a lot of habitat value, and we wanna we wanna leave them where we can or, you know, shorten them. To remove. The hazard factor from them, but. But I have I have confidence based upon the conversations that I've had that that those considerations will take place and. I'm looking forward to seeing this get going. There's a lot of great potential here.
And I and I will be fully transparent with the council. You know, the city will not have much power to dictate how this two point one million gets used. I have talked to the county representative for this project and Counselor Clark, they did emphasize exactly what you just said of that. You know, they're here to collaborate with the partners on the ground already doing the work, so I do have good faith that. Intentions moving forward are are good ones.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Appreciate that report, Jordan, and also your good kind of forethought in communicating with the county. To to provide us with some of those insights. It's really helpful. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Counsel Clark?
I move to execute agreement number. Seven three zero 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 dash zero 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 six nine. Zero nine. For the Greenway Path Emergency Restoration Project and authorize the mayor and city manager to act as signatories.
We have a motion and a second to execute agreement number seven three zero 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 dash zero 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 six nine zero nine. For the Greenway Path Emergency Restoration Project and authorize the mayor and the city manager to act as signatories. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Clark, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I'm I'm good.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Or deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Penomraff?
Yes.
Counsel Grider?
Yeah.
Counsel Pestezo? I'm sorry, Counsel Pestezo stepped away. Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counsel Prior Miller?
Yes.
Well, she carries mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item number ten point three is a discussion of urban renewal proposal. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just putting a new slideshow up to share with you all. Okay. Just so you all know, this agenda item is a discussion topic. No motions needed tonight. This is just to continue working on revising the urban renewal plan proposal that was presented this center. So I will go ahead and give a presentation. And it is an engaging presentation throughout, so I will be asking for comments and thoughts as we go. So as a reminder to to all you folks, as well as the folks in the room, on August seventeenth, City Council adopted a resolution. And that resolution declared our intent to consider an urban renewal plan. That froze tax bases to generate twenty twenty-two assessed values. Um, which in other terms helped delay the start year to reduce impact on taxing districts. As well as to refer that plan to the public vote for May twenty twenty-three.
And in that additional time that it gives us as a city and a community, to use that time to really refine the plan to make for a stronger plan. That really best serves our community. And so tonight's discussion is really about those refinements and where we want to see changes happen. To help provide direction to me and staff on the actual edits that we'll make to the plan itself. And so as a reminder, the process for considering an urban renewal plan is first we create a proposed plan or in this case refine our proposed plan. We will then send that plan out for a forty-five day review period. We will hold a public hearing and then we'll incorporate any changes based on feedback from that process. Then there'll be a chance for city council to vote on their approval of that plan and then their referral to the ballot. Then it will show up as a ballot measure for the talent citizens to vote on, town community members to vote on. Um, we are here, we're at step one of this process right now. So there is a long road ahead and many chances to engage and make changes throughout. So tonight I'm going to be talking on six different areas. One, the financial analysis to give you all just an update of where we are in that process. Measurable goals to really help refine and define what we're trying to achieve with this plan. And I'll be asking specifically to council tonight, do I have the goal areas right? To make sure I'm designing some measures aligned with what intent is. We're gonna talk a little bit about some tools to help reduce the risk of displacement that comes from urban renewal. And really asking the city council if there's any particular policies that you want us to focus on. We'll talk a little bit about the unexpected impact from the fire and how we want urban real to play a role and not play a role on those expected impacts. Share a bit about how we can support our partners' work in the other taxing districts. And then to share some community identified projects from some submissions from community members for this plan. So I'm gonna jump into financial analysis. So um, the assessed values were certified on October seventh. Um, and we officially received notice from the county of what our expected property tax revenues of the city will be this year. They will be very close to what we anticipated based off our building permits, which will be about one point four million in tax revenue this year. Um, which is great. We're one point two million um, immediately after the fire. So it's nice to see that come back up to a higher level. Um, just to share with you all, we did receive one point four, five million um, in twenty twenty. That was the pre-fire tax revenue that we had. Because we've had such inflation with COVID, converting that to real dollars, um, we're getting closer to what we were pre-fire. Yeah, Counselor Byers?
Just a point of clarification, uh, when you say this year, do you mean this year, the calendar year or this year, the city fiscal year?
Thank you. I typically mean both. So property tax values get assessed in um, October, they get certified, but they represent the January twenty twenty-two values. So you all as property owners would pay your calendar year twenty twenty-two taxes this November. Um, the city receives those taxes in November and then we expend those taxes through the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Thank you.
Of course. So while that textual has been certified, the county has not yet released individual property level data in a form that we can use to be able to run the financial analysis. That is expected to be published this last week of October. So we're already have a request in to get that GIS data. They hand off to Nikki and Elaine's team to run that financial analysis. Part of tonight's discussion will help us shape that financial analysis specifically. If there's specific scenarios that you all in the council want to look at. For example, what would be the financial impact of a shorter timeline, the boundary change, et cetera. Any questions on financial analysis before I move to the next category? Yeah, Counselor.
Yeah, um, so again, just to clarify, um, this represents uh, uh, several months ago when we um, said no to the, the previous plan. Um, we weren't sure uh, what we'd be working with in terms of, of taxes. And, and this represents that number. Well, we don't know necessarily how much we're talking about in the district that analysis is to come. What we do see is a very healthy lift uh, in the tax base.
Yes.
Um, and that, and that has become a known fact, which is not specifically known for the urban area.
Yes, the assessed value for the city of talent is now unknown as of October seventh. What is still unknown is what the urban renewal projections can be. Uh, but those will be known as soon as we get the data and run that analysis.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, counselor. Okay, measurable goals. So the question I'm asking you all tonight is, are these goal areas the correct focus of the urban renewal plan? And kind of the intent that you all of council have for what this urban renewal plan will accomplish. But before I ask that question, I just want to give a little quick reminder of what I mean by measurable goals and why they're important. So we have kind of what I have of this and closely with citywide goals. So the idea is
That was, that was garbled, um, Jordan. I didn't catch it all.
Yeah, this is the reason why I tried to switch to a laptop today and that laptop tech failed. Am I coming in any, any clearer? Should I do a quick plug and unplug of the camera? I'm gonna do the unplug and plug.
Give me one second here.
All right, great. I'm hoping that is this coming in any clearer? Yep, okay. We're gonna roll with it and just hopefully not touch anything. I'll let you see me. Please, please let me know. Give me a, a wave if I get garbly again and I will switch to a different microphone.
Thank you.
Okay, beautiful. So the blue circles represent just the big broad goal areas. The yellow squares represent specific projects. So what we're trying to achieve with urban renewal is we're going to try to, to end that specific project that will lead to our goals. Right, so we hope that by offering SCC reimbursements to developers, it'll lead them to create more affordable housing. We will first thing land and then providing it cheaply to developer, encourage more. So the purpose of, of doing measurable goals is the purpose to measure for, for actually leading to our intent.
Jordan, let me recommend you leaving your camera off. Um, if that, and let's check and see if that, sometimes it can't, my, my understanding is sometimes the camera function interferes, uh, interferes with the sound function. See if that works. I don't even know if you can hear me at this point.
All right, can you hear me now? Perfect, I heard you guys the whole time. So I will keep my camera off and hopefully that helps the problem. So the intent of having metrics help us evaluate are the projects we are implementing, leading to the outcomes that we wanted? By offering SCC reimbursements, are we seeing affordable housing occur? So I just want to remind that that's the reason we really want to have measurable goals. So what I will be doing is I will be looking through a lot of our real estate data and all of that jazz to help come up with some potential measurable goals of how many housing units are we making, for example. What I'm looking for verification from you all are these categories, the right categories that I should be designing metrics for. And so I will just put up only the goals here and not potential projects. But I want to give a reminder to the council, urban renewal will not be able to accomplish the full extent of our goals. No, urban renewal will not be able to bring back all of the affordable housing our community needs. But the hope of urban renewal is to help get us part of the way. Um, so my question to you all, what I have heard loud and clear through the process of, of the urban renewal proposal to date is a huge concern. It's affordable housing because that's something that we lost so much of in the fire. Bringing back our businesses and revitalizing our commercial corridor, since we lost so much of that in the fire. Tree canopy, um, since we lost so much of that to the fire. And then upgrading city infrastructure. And this has a lot of categories inside of it. This is our emergency preparedness. These are things like our water lines and our sidewalks. This is bike and pedestrian infrastructure and things like parks, like our fifteen minute park accessibility. So my question all, are these the right goal areas that we are working towards with our urban renewal? Yeah, Counselor Byers? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you so much for putting this together. This is great, Jordan. Um, I am wondering if we can add an extra little blue bubble that is for emergency mitig, like disaster mitigation. Um, I, to me, it's not the exact same as emergency preparedness. However, there is overlap and I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, kind of similar, um, or pretend, potentially overlapping comment. But uh, climate resiliency um, is a uh, is a strong goal that, you know, upgrade city infrastructure to support climate resiliency is um, would include a lot of uh, potentially important and really beneficial projects for the community.
Yeah, and I'm putting this in really big up top because I think that's really where I hear tree canopy is, is plays a huge role is in our climate resiliency.
Indeed.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments on the goal areas? Um, I will share what I'm going to be really focusing on is referring back to our citywide goals for this one. To help come up with those metrics. And then what we can do as a group is set specific urban renewal goals. Of how much do we expect urban renewal to help us meet those citywide goals? So that'll be the process I use for this. And it will parallel very nicely with our city goal setting process this year. All right, I'm gonna move us to our next category, which is how do we reduce the potential of displacement? And I'm gonna give a quick one-on-one on, on what displacement really means. So urban renewal by nature is intended to lead to gentrification. And often we see gentrification needs displacement in our communities. How does this happen? So urban renewal projects are really meant to encourage development of an area. When you develop an area, it increases it quote-unquote attractiveness, which pulls folks with higher incomes to that area. Which drives surrounding property values up, which can then price out the folks who were living in that area prior to urban renewal. Um, this process is really called gentrification and displacement. And while it's often not the goals, well, I will say historically urban renewal has been used as a tool for this, for intentional displacement. But in more recent years, urban renewal has had the unintended impact of having gentrification displacement. And a message I've heard very, very clearly from this council is that this attempt at urban renewal is to counteract the displacement that's occurring from the gentrification post-fire. So I reached out to the um, anti-displacement team in Portland. They have a team of planners focused on anti-displacement. And I've kind of worked through what Portland does to try to identify policies that might work here in talent. To help prevent that unintentional displacement from urban renewal. Those policies included affordable housing set aside policy. So this would be city ordinance that we would pass to say that a certain percentage of urban renewal funds have to be used towards affordable housing. Um, a displacement risk analysis, which would be a formula or framework that each urban renewal project would need to be assessed against. And if it reaches a certain displacement potential, that project would not be able to move forward. Um, and then affordable housing preservation and acquisition. This really just says, let earmark the most vulnerable neighborhoods to displacement. To include in, in the urban renewal area so that we could use urban renewal funds to protect those properties from displacement. Um, there are pros and cons to each of these. Um, I'm happy to talk through them. But it's one to first throw it to you all to kind of discuss, to make sure you have a strong understanding of what they mean.
Any comments or questions? I, I, you know, this is new material, um, this particular slide. I mean, we've had the discussions and in uh, other contexts, but this is new material. So does everybody want to take a minute? Do you have any questions? I think it's worth discussing if, if um, if you have questions about it, for sure. I, I have a question, Jordan. My question is, um, so you reached out to, I'm sorry, what was the name of the team again?
Yeah, it's the anti-displacement team. Love Johnson is the main planner assigned to that team.
And um, do they have, you know, data to look at? Um, how, you know, about um, projects they've, they've um, used these methods on and um, what the outcomes have been?
Yeah, I forgot to add the link to the slide. I really highly recommend in your agenda packet. I have linked to their anti-displacement toolkit and framework report. It is well worth the read, um, to look through just to hear what they're doing. Portland has a much more robust data collection and data analysis team than we have here in talent. They do have access to much more data um, than we do, particularly when it comes to um, it's called housing burdened households, meaning that more than thirty percent of their incomes are having to go to their housing. Either via rent, mortgage utilities, et cetera. Since we are a small town, we do not have that same detailed level of data that a larger municipality does. Um, so we can make best guesses. Um, and, and move forward, I think, in a much more on-the-ground boot, knowing our community sort of way than Portland's able to. Which is an advantage, but we are also disadvantaged. We want to use hard data to help make our policy decisions.
Although I think some of this data, the housing burden um, data can be found in uh, the housing needs analysis. And I, and it, it's a, it's, I think, five years old, um, but there's still some data that I think is usable. Um, or at least um, at minimum, it would be good information um, just to explain, you know, that, that metric in general. And then um, I would imagine we'll probably gather some of this data as well as part of our new housing needs analysis process. Is that, is that reasonable to expect?
Yes, but that process will likely occur after um, an urban renewal decision is made. But it can be absolutely integrated into the urban renewal implementation.
Yeah, I mean, it, if is it, if I kind of understand how the process works, um, it could be integrated later, right? I mean, so you, the, the refinement of these plans are, are, are yet to come over the years as well. So it could be integrated. I mean, we're probably talking about within the next couple of years, right? If it were adopted by the voters.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Counsel Penamriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, um, I, I think when we talked um, earlier this week, Jordan, I had, I had trouble understanding. Um, number three, and I think you came up with a very good example of uh, for example, a um, you know, a mobile home park that perhaps um, where it was kind of um, uh, made more, well, basically gentrified and, and that folks uh, found that they could no longer live there. Um, I'm wondering if you could expand a little bit on that. But, but what's, what's um, for me, I think that, that we have, that requires a very thoughtful approach. Is that um, it seems to me that we need to have a, a enough of an understanding of where those areas are. Um, not five or ten years down the road, but, but right away. Because um, that will help us uh, define uh, any changes we might want to make in the boundary. So I was wondering if maybe you could expand. I didn't like the way I explained number three. I thought maybe you could do a little bit better job than I did.
Yeah, absolutely. No, good, that was a good, good summary there. I'll provide a little more detail to that. So for example, one of the projects that was named in the urban renewal proposal. So for example, one of the projects that was named in the urban renewal proposal is to clear out the hazardous fuels of Wagner Creek and establish the walking path that is part of our long-term community vision along Wagner Creek. Um, along Wagner Creek is one of our manufactured home parks, Shady Brooks. And, and that, you know, what we could potentially happen with that project is as we clear out Wagner Creek, as we establish that walking path, properties that align Wagner Creek are much more attractive. Um, and so thus there is some incentive or potential for the folks that are currently living in Shady Brooks to potentially be, um, dis- displaced or forced out of their properties because that those properties now have higher value. Folks with more money want to move into them. Even though we have manufactured home zone protection, meaning that that land can't be used from the other than our manufactured home park. Um, there could be incentive for the property owner to spiff up the park to try to attract, um, folks that will be paying higher rents in that area. So that is why, you know, the recommendation would be if we want to move forward cleaning up Wagner Creek, do we want to include, for example, the Shady Brooks neighborhood in our urban renewal area? So that we could, um, take steps to prevent that potential displacement by increasingly attracting this of those properties along Wagner Creek. And so that's really what this third policy is about is to identify what are those specific areas that are most vulnerable to displacement from urban renewal projects in our city. And then making sure that we include them within the boundaries so we can use resources to protect them. Um, I am taking steps. I am engaging with various community groups and with specific neighborhoods to identify which those most vulnerable, vulnerable properties or vulnerable neighborhoods are for consideration of includes, inclusion in our urban renewal boundary. Um, and so I hope to have a proposal for you all, you know, within the next couple of weeks of where those are, but those conversations are ongoing right now.
Uh, Councilor Penomarif?
Yeah, um, and then another question about number two, uh, the displacement risk analysis. Is that something that, um, you see if, if it's kind of like a housing needs analysis, it doesn't sound like it's going to be, it's something very useful, but not very expensive. Um, is that something that you see just happening once or, uh, periodically throughout the, the life of urban renewal?
Yeah, it's, I, I have my own concerns with using frameworks for evaluating a project should move forward or not. Um, but I'll, I'll do a quick explanation. So urban renewal is a very flexible tool. Um, and it's designed to be flexible because it's a typically a thirty-year tool and it's hard to predict what the needs are going to be thirty years from now that we need to address. So the idea, you know, coming out of Portland is that you place the requirement that every urban renewal project, not only the ones that we think about right now, but the ones that may be needed fifteen years from now. And that each project has to be evaluated against a formula or a set of questions to make sure that it will not cause unintended impacts that we don't want to have happen. And if it will cause those impacts, then the project won't be able to move forward. So the idea behind this is a really great idea. It's a really strong idea. The difficulty is, is it depends on your ability to create that framework to evaluate projects. And it's a very difficult framework to create. Um, it's also a very burdensome process sometimes to try to evaluate. Um, I was part of the equity framework implementation in Portland. And it is tough. It is tough to try to make a very qualitative conversation into a quantitative framework in size. Um, so I would actually hesitate about recommending this policy. I wanted to put it on here because the council had discussed it earlier. And it is a potential policy, but I think it will carry many burdens with it without a, as easily seen outcomes as with some of the other potential policies.
Councilor Penomarif?
And thanks for giving us your, your thoughts on that. Um, what are your thoughts about number one, uh, risks of, uh, it sounds like it's set in stone.
Yeah, I think, I think this is one of the most powerful tools if we want to ensure that urban renewal is used for affordable housing. I think one of the challenges of it is that it is hard to predict what the needs will be thirty years from now. Um, so it takes away some of the flexibility of urban renewal, which in some ways is a pro because it puts it towards affordable housing, um, but as a con, if affordable housing isn't something that's needed down the line.
Are there any other, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Greider, go ahead and, and ask your question, then I'll ask mine.
Certainly, this might be a stupid question, but in the example that you gave, Jordan, with, um, Shady Brook, how would number one apply there? Um, if something was, if there was discussion of upgrading a property, um, I guess I'm not understanding that.
So if, if Shady Brook is not included in the urban renewal area, we will not be able to use urban renewal funds in that neighborhood. And so the idea of number three is really, say Shady Brook was in the urban renewal area, say we did um, do the Wagner Creek cleanup and say that now the folks there are facing higher evictions because the park trying to clean it up. You know, we could in the doing of the Wagner Creek project, we could require a deep restriction that would make, um, that could in some way, you know, prevent that property from increasing or evicting for certain reasons. We could purchase that property, you know, if that property puts up for sale because now it's much more valuable. Urban renewal could purchase that property and then thus maintain that manufactured home park with current residents. Um, it just offers a lot more flexibility around helping protect residents. If one and three were in place at the same time, then the funds set aside through one, so those forty-five percent of urban renewal funds could be used to say purchase the Shady Brooks Mobile Home Park. Um, if it went up for sale, you know, and risk the, the affordable housing that's currently there.
But it would first need to be, um, okay, yeah, I, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and so my, my question really to council at this point is, you know, and take time to think about this, which of these three policies do you really want to see within the plan proposal or within the city at the same time as the plan proposal? Um, or if there's others that you know of that you would like to include, for example, that one and that Portland report has many other tools for Portland. Yeah, Councilor Byers?
Yeah, this is, um, exactly the information I was looking for. Um, thank you for sharing this. I would really appreciate it if we could have a study session to dive further into this. And perhaps have some, no, um, people experienced with applying various policies and principles. Um, and seeing what it's like an action for them. And I understand that it doesn't always translate uh, perfectly from a large metro, metro area to a small town, but still I think it would be great to hear about unforeseen impacts, um, both positive and negative ways they would have done it differently when they were first implementing. Um, yeah. The input that they had from community members after the fact or during the implementation that would have shifted how they did it in the first place.
Sounds right. I think that's excellent session. I, I would love to organize that, um, with folks I can, yeah.
It goes to the question I was going to ask after, uh, Councilor Greider. I, I totally agree with what Councilor Byers just said and I always, um, love to hear um, about, um, you know, lived, lived and worked experiences. Um, and be able to ask questions. And so to that, I, I would have asked you, but probably could ask in a study session, um, in number one, where you have, um, measures, uh, for set aside policy, um, is I, I would imagine there's other working examples other than like percentages. There are other ways to measure this. And if there are, um, I, I'd be satisfied to, to take up that question at a study session, but, but maybe to ask those folks who have experience with these policies to, to, um, show uh, or demonstrate varying ways of of determining that, how that, you know, proportion is measured. But, you know, are there other methods than just percentages? And if so, um, how do they work? What are the complexities? That kind of thing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I'll add that to the, the research list. All right. Well, thank you all. I'm going to move to the next slide here. Unexpected impacts from the fire. Um, as you know all, boo, pardon me, as time goes on, we all are seeing impacts that we didn't expect immediately after the fire. And I think we will continue to expect to see over the coming years. These are some of the ones that, you know, I have become very aware of in my role. And so I want to discuss with you, you know, of these impacts, which ones we really want to prioritize or take into consideration for urban renewal. Um, I will say I have color coded these so that the green shows one where like urban renewal, we would want to ramp up to help address these issues. You know, the purple would be more of a ramp down of urban renewal to help address these issues, just so that you guys know where that color sequence came. One of the impacts that we are seeing is that we are having higher density neighborhood than what was there before the fire. Um, this is great. We wanted higher density of the city. We purposely zoned it to have that happen. But it is happening at a much faster speed than the city anticipated prior to the fire. So that is going to require likely some infrastructure upgrades at a faster pace than we've been planning for. Um, so urban renewal is an amazing tool to help meet those uh, those near-term costs to give that infrastructure upgraded sooner than later. Um, so this would be, you know, making sure a larger proportion of their renewal funds can go towards infrastructure. Um, and are really making sure that we're having enough to cover the costs of those types of projects. Another.
Can I ask about, about that piece? I mean, we're already seeing, uh, we're already seeing, um, some signs of that in some of the planning. Um, you know, some of the planning projects that are coming through the planning commission, uh, in particular around um, water services, et cetera. And, um, so it, it has, um, I, I think if we have a study session, it would be interesting for us to get a little more detail on that because if, when I read address increases in demand for city services, um, it, uh, it, it might be more clear to, um, really drill down on, um, the demand for additional infrastructure and the services related to that. Um, and just get some more detail about that because I, um, like I said, we're starting, you know, we, we are already seeing it. Uh, at the planning commission level, so.
Absolutely. And, and I am working with our engineer to kind of just reassess and, and kind of change our timeline a bit through our capital improvement project process. You know, I want to just let her know it's not, you know, our hair's on fire. We need to fix this right away. We do have time to address this. Is this more, we have a five to ten-year horizon rather than our thirty-year horizon we were expecting? Um, and really the one that comes most to mind for infrastructure needed is really the sidewalks, curbs of gutter. That we have a lot of neighborhoods that didn't have that infrastructure in place, but now we have a much higher density of folks. Likely a lot of older folks will be living there. So we want to make sure that we have um, those improvements in place to help serve our community members. But yes, Mayor, that will be upcoming and, um, looking into what the actual upgrades needed are to be able to put actual dollar values on to know what's needed.
At, at the study session.
At the study session. This is a, a work ongoing. Um, a lot of it will depend on how much time we have to collect that information. Um, et cetera, but it is a current active project. So I'm hoping in a relatively soon timeline.
Thank you.
Another unexpected impact is a lot, we lost a lot of what's called naturally occurring affordable housing. So naturally occurring affordable housing means affordable housing that does not have to be subsidized by the government or is not subsidized by the government, but is still at a price point where lower income folks can make without being overly burdened with housing costs. We lost a lot to the fire. We lost a huge amount of our naturally occurring affordable housing to the fire. The housing that is being replaced is no longer naturally affordable. Um, largely because it's brand-new manufactured homes. They come with a much higher price tag. They come with much higher insurance, et cetera. So that means our naturally occurring affordable housing is now largely outside of the burn scar. Um, this really comes back to policy number three that I presented on the displacement side of do we want to identify where that naturally occurring affordable housing is and include it in the boundary to be able to use urban renewal funds to, to support and protect it? Um, the flip side with urban renewal is, you know, we are already at our maximum twenty-five percent. So by including in new neighborhoods, we have to remove others and it would reduce the overall financial potential of urban renewal. Another unexpected impact, you know, with higher density comes expected more people living in talent. And with more people, there just becomes the, um, natural higher demand for city services. And so, you know, this is of course the balance of how do we get the projects that we need urban renewal to move forward? And to rebuild our community the way we want to see it rebuilt, while also making sure we're not having to increase the cost of city services on our residents. Um, this one will really fall down into the financial analysis to really parse out, um, what the impact of a renewal will be on the city over the duration that it is. And then finally, an unexpected impact from the fire, you know, we have not seen this yet, but we have heard very loud and clear from paradise that this is something that they're now seeing. Um, a number of years after their fire is that home insurance costs have increased greatly for folks in paradise, um, to the point where some folks are being priced out of their community. The, we have people at the state level who are working with insurance providers to come up with standards that we as a city could put in place to help lower costs community-wide. For example, if we adopted firewise ordinance codes, um, et cetera. Would also want to consider helping provide grant money for people to be able to adhere to those, those codes to help lower their insurance costs. Um, once again, this would be a program that would, you know, we would want to benefit beyond the urban renewal district and so it would require funds, um, for a citywide program unrelated to urban renewal. Any questions on what these unexpected impacts are, what they mean and how they might be impacted by urban renewal? Are there any ones that you all really want to prioritize or incorporate in your consideration of changes to this urban renewal plan?
I think all of them.
Okay.
Or, and, and we can, you know, we can, we can dive deeper. I'd want to have all of these brought to a study session, I guess is what I would say. Um, so that we can dive deeper. I don't think there's any, it's, there's nothing here that seems less, um, you know, less important than the other. So, um, on, just based on what we, what, what we know now. It'll be interesting to talk about it at greater depth. And when we're free to have longer conversation about it with more detail. Um, Councilor Penomarif?
Yeah, I just want to, um, just start the idea, um, that's occurring to me as I look at, for example, number one in the talk about need for sidewalks. Um, better pedestrian access, uh, bike safety and all of that. Um, prioritizing something may not necessarily mean there's a really high price tag on it. Um, one of the things that I, that I hear when I, um, go to these, uh, seminars, webinars um, about transportation funding is that, um, a lot of these funds are looking to partner with other funds so that if urban renewal contributed something, not to pay for the whole thing, but something towards, um, a transportation project or sidewalks or, or what have you, that there are other, you know, either state funds, safe, safe routes to school, um, what have you, that could help contribute. So, um, and, and I want you to correct me on that, Jordan, if it's a misunderstanding that sometimes, um, prioritizing, um, things doesn't necessarily have to come with a, a super high price tag. Does that, does that sound right?
I, I absolutely agree with the idea of urban renewal is best used when you can leverage any sort of partnership, whether it's with grant funding or whether it's a private public sector leveraging. You know, that's how you can help urban renewal dollars go farther. We are in a very, um, you know, untested territory of urban renewal. Where typically urban renewal, you know, gets revenue very slowly over the years and it takes a long time to build up resources. And so it's very necessary. Where typically urban renewal, you know, gets revenue very slowly over the years and it takes a long time to build up resources. And so it's very necessary to find all the partnerships you can to get projects done. We are in a scenario where urban renewal will generate a very large amount of revenue very quickly because of the rebuild, the speed of the rebuild is happening. And so when I use the word prioritize in this, I'm thinking on a larger scale concept of, you know, are we, do we want to prioritize focusing dollars into an urban renewal area? Or do we want to focus on kind of limiting urban renewal dollars and being able to use the tax revenue that would save the city for citywide services? Um, it's more that priority. Are we, do we want to prioritize in getting it, you know, as much money as we can because the, the projects needed are necessary and that we have the rebuilding? Or do we want to find more of a balance where we have an urban renewal that brings in less funds? It's really a, a trade off on revenue is really the priority I'm looking for.
I, I didn't hear how they were mutually exclusive though, Jordan. And, um, like I would still think, um, I, I just follow up, uh, Council Byers. Um, so I would still think that, that we would, that in any scenario, we would still look to, um, you know, public, private partnerships, especially in, in housing. And, um, and then also, um, contributions with, um, other jurisdictions, state, for example, federal jurisdictions in order to, to manage some of the infrastructure, which ultimately could help us manage um, the overall impact over 30 years, um, as well. So, I mean, you may not have said that or, um, uh, but I just didn't hear that this type of, um, this type of use of an urban renewal is mutually exclusive from its traditional uses, which is to leverage other funds. Did I just misunderstand or, or did I, did you say something different?
Um, I feel like, you know, for me, it's we're trying to strike a balance, right? Between the projects that urban renewal can do and the services that the city needs to provide. I'm speaking with both my city manager hat on as well as my tour executive director hat on. And really what I'm trying to look is I'm trying to find that fulcrum in the balance to know what is the best fit for talent between, you know, maximizing the amount of urban renewal that we can collect and spend, um, and where we want to I'm, I'm, I'm using long, long, pardon me, wrong words here because I'm, my sugars are getting a little low. So I apologize for my words, the bitches. I think, I think you're absolutely right. Nothing is mutually exclusive. And we will always use taxpayer dollars to try to go as far as possible.
Which, which, which minimizes the impacts, I, is what I'm, what I'm saying. And I think I'm hearing you say the same thing.
And when you say minimize impacts, do you mean?
Financial impacts.
To the city or to the urban renewal?
Um, to the city.
Yes, the, the financial impact of the city will come from the redistribution of taxes to urban renewal.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, but I think we're saying it differently.
I, I, I'm on board with that one.
Yeah. Um, okay. Um, thank you. Uh, Council Byers?
Thank you. Um, I think, at least for me, so much of determining what I, I would advocate for incorporating or prioritizing would be directly informed by the best practices um, towards making the goals happen and the metrics that we choose for that, which I realize seems a little backwards, but um, as I think about perhaps the secondary items that make something like an affordable housing neighborhood truly affordable, like having, making sure that neighborhood is walkable with easily accessible bus routes for a workforce. Um, it begins to inform a lot of other projects that, uh, initially seem perhaps less related. Um, so I, I really feel like it would be beneficial, at least from my perspective, to revisit this conversation after a study session on the potential best practices and policies. Um, to take a look at when, when we're trying to, um, regenerate talent after a natural disaster as opposed to, um, you know, all the other, the other things urban renewal might be used for. I think we're in a unique position where it will be very informed by more information about um, other aspects that we are being asked to consider.
I appreciate that input, Council. Thank you.
So, um, I, I think we're still thinking, advancing all of this to a further discussion. Um, unless there's something that somebody sees it differently.
Great. I will move to the next slide then. Um, I'm getting close to wrap up, I promise here. Um, this is just a quick progress report FYI, you know, but another big conversation topic we had in over the summer was how can we support taxing districts, um, in their work, recognizing that this is a redistribution of tax dollars away from other taxing districts. And so what I've been doing is reviewing the master planning documents of those other taxing districts, for example, the library services, the RV TD, fire, et cetera. To identify if there is ways that we could help forward talent based projects with urban renewal. And I have now started setting up meetings with executive directors just to better understand what their priorities are and really what the reality of their, you know, individual financial situations are. To really make sure and understand how urban renewal might impact them, both for, for better and for worse too. And then I think what we'll do is we should save this one for another study session, but I just want to invite you all to look at the packet or look at these slides that we can post later. I did a shout out in the talent news and review requesting community members to submit any project ideas they have, how they could make talent more livable and more the community they want to be in. And so what you see here is a quick summary of some of those specific projects that have been submitted. Thank you to all community members who have been sending in emails. I'm still getting them. So this list will grow. Um, but it shows, you know, a lot of the great ideas that are coming directly from the community that we could incorporate into this plan as well.
Yeah. And, you know, kudos to the pickleball people who never, who never win.
I have to admit, I took up pickleball, but I have yet to win a match.
Good for you.
Played a lot of batches now.
I hear it's fun.
Okay. So just, so you all know, I am going to take your feedback from today's discussion. I think what I'm here is I'm going to take that feedback to inform a study session. Will really be the true step. And then from that study session, I'll then take that study session feedback to incorporate it into the language within the proposed urban renewal plan. You know, before this meeting, this was really the anticipated timeline for when we could get the financial analysis in front of you. You know, get the proposed plan in front of you, public hearing, and then consideration of adoption, you know, before the end of the year. Um, but I would look to you all as council to see if you'd be comfortable stretching that, recognizing the, that there's some more thought and information that we want to gather.
Yep. I don't think the timeline means anything more to us than just being able to uh, provide for the timeline, uh, for putting it on the ballot in May. Um, and so unless anybody else sees it differently. Um, and I think the deadline for that is when?
It's mid February.
So pushing it out past the first of the year um, from, um, is what I'm hearing. You say as long as we can get it in by February.
Yes, we would just want to start our public review process, um, by early January. Which, which is doable. Okay, great. So what I will say corrected timeline on the fly is mid November. You know, we'll look for that study session to have, to dive into some more of the details.
Yeah, we use, at one point in time, we had a graph, uh, for the timeline for the process and, um, I, I, I think it was a little confusing and people had difficulty finding it. I trust that we can do a better job this time around, but I do think we should do it again, get that timeline on, on the website and, um, make sure that people, you know, when people ask, we can refer them to it and they can find it easily and it's easy to understand would be good, good.
Yeah. And I, and I will say the timeline, you know, is in, oh, near constant flux until we are ready to initiate that 45 day period. Um, so what I'll do is I can go ahead and put an article out there with some generalities, you know, months to expect things. And then we can refine that as we get more specifics on dates.
Great. And then I heard some feedback about our website that, um, the, the, the plan that we did not adopt um, is, appears to be, it looks like the current plan. And, um, so maybe if we can just mark it as the plan that was not adopted. So if anybody wants to look at it, they still can, but it shows that it's not, it's not the plan that we're working on. And then, then that way this timeline is going to make more sense.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. And we will look into, to put that clarification out there.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Jordan? Well, thank you, Jordan. That was, and, oh, Council Penamor?
I, I just want to say a great job. It's, it's, um, you're, you're, I'm calling you Professor Jordan because this is just really, uh, it's a great, we've been doing this for a long time, but I always learned something new and I really like the way you, you put things in front of us. I am very much looking forward to the study session. So thanks.
And I want to add, or would have said that also, I appreciate that, um, your team is, is backing you up and putting together such, you know, good presentations for us. It's really, this is next level. Um, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to be part of, part of the making it happen. Thank you.
Right. Um, so the next item on the agenda is item number 11. And, um, let's go ahead before we, um, uh, before I ask the, oh, Hector?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, I should have brought to your attention earlier, uh, Mr. Chris Lutz has, uh, requested to speak on this agenda item.
Okay. Uh, did, did you have a speaker request form? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Cause I didn't see his hand up. All right. Um, no problem. Thank you for reminding me to ask. Um, so, uh, go ahead and bring, um, Chris forward and Chris, as always, straight state your, uh, name and city for the record, please. See there?
Okay. I, I was just unmuted. Yes, Chris was City Phoenix. I'll be quick and then you want to get to the next agenda item. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I still haven't heard a discussion by city council going back many, many months of the concerns from our fire department. We, we had a concern regarding the, uh, moving of $17 million from the fire budget, fire department budget over to urban renewal. But this will never been vetted and certified and discussed in city council. And that's the number one concern of the citizens and talent is what's the effect of urban renewal on the fire department? I know you're looking to talk to different stakeholders, maybe you've already talked and talked to the fire department, but at some point I, I'd really like to hear, I think everyone would like to hear how the fire department feels. Are they still against urban renewal or are they now for it? That discussion really has to happen. I really enjoyed Jordan's reality checks upon aspirational goals. I mean, a little while ago, we talked about something being mutually exclusive. You're doing right is mutually exclusive. You take $17 million from the talent city budget. And you give it to urban renewal. There's some exclusivity there and you're not going to be able to do what you need to do with the city budget of talent because that money is gone. It's gone to urban renewal. So is it exclusive? It, it, it really is mutually exclusive. Um, one more thing, did I hear correctly that the city may consider buying Shady Brook Mobile Home Park? Just rough idea. Really, really, really think about that. And that's it. I'll let you get your next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I, uh, as a point of clarification, uh, Jordan, if you, um, if anybody else understood what I said, like, uh, what Mr. Lutz understood what I said as, let me just clarify it because that's, I, that's um, not at all what I meant by mutually exclusive. So, um, what I was trying to clarify was that the use of leveraging funds of an urban renewal agency or even city funds for that matter to bring in additional funds as a common practice. Um, and the fact that this is a different tool. Um, in other words, you know, public, private partnerships are a great example of that practice that I was trying to clarify on. Um, where, uh, there's investments, um, from urban renewal or the city, Phoenix is doing it. They're investing, uh, they're taking properties that they own. Um, they're giving them to, uh, developers for a dollar, which is an investment of whatever the value of that property is. That's their part of the partnership and the developer adds their part of the partnership. And that is what, uh, that is what leveraging the funds. Um, that, that's what we were talking about when we were talking about leveraging funds. So, um, what I thought I heard was that because this is a different type of um, uh, funding package that, um, there would be less of that. And I was just trying to clarify that I didn't think that this kind of funding package or this kind of use of, uh, funds that are, that are more front loaded than a traditional one. It sort of averages out over time, but they're more front loaded than the, than a traditional one. Should mutually exclude, it's not mutually exclusive. It's, and it, to me, it's both, right? You still, you still can use the funding for leveraging. You still should use this funding for leveraging because A, it either lessens the impact, um, to the jurisdiction, either the city or the, or urban renewal or pro, or it, um, allows you to, um, exponentially grow the opportunity, uh, for the community by using federal dollars, using state dollars and things like that. So just to add some clarity, that's what I meant. In case anybody else heard, um, heard it the same way that Chris heard, want to make sure that that's not what I was saying. So, um, and that we would, I, what I was trying, the point I was trying to make to, to city manager, Jordan, was that we would, I would hope that we would just as um, robustly pursue those opportunities as we would any other opportunity. And I think that's what I meant by, I think we're saying the same thing, just in different ways. So. Um, okay, thanks. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is item number 11. Um, we did have two, uh, two, uh, uh, two things that came up on item number five. We'll get to those in a second. Was there any other items for item number 11 to add the item number 11 before we get going? Um, counselor, excuse me. So I have Hector and Jordan's hand up. Hector, you were first.
I'm sorry, Mayor, to get down from earlier.
Oh, okay. Uh, uh, Jordan?
Yeah, just a quick FYI for future agenda items. I am expecting to host a study session for our first November council meeting specific to the capital improvement plan. Just to put that bee in your bonnet.
That's, that's, that's a pretty exciting little bee.
Yeah.
Uh, that's great. Good news. Uh, anybody else? Want to add anything to other? All right. So we have, um, a request. I, um, will look to you guys, uh, for a little help on this request. Um, I, uh, I thought I heard two different requests. Um, but I have one letter here and I think they're both included in the letter. So I guess I would ask, does this, does the council want to entertain these items? I, there's some clarify, clarifications. I think that, um, city count, uh, city manager, Jordan, I think you can help me make about um, who's in contact with, um, Rogue Retreat, who manages the gateway project and who doesn't? And, um, and who, uh, who perhaps, um, the new executive director, Bill Ely is referring to in his, in, in the secondhand uh, reference to what he was reporting out to, to people, what your best guess might be about that.
Well, the, the mayor, I'll just quickly share, you know, for those that are really interested in the gateway transitional housing site. That is something that's not city council or not city business. It's actually urban renewal business. So I highly recommend joining our next November meeting, um, where this topic is going to be covered. It was briefly touched on our, in our October meeting. Um, but if you're looking But if you're looking for any information on that one, always welcome to come to me since I am also the executive director. And I manage the day to day activities of urban renewal. Um, and also always invite you to our public meeting the first Tuesday of every month.
Thank you. And, and that didn't quite answer my question. Um, so can you clarify, please? Um, the different roles and responsibilities, um, is, uh, in regards to property management? Of the board and of the staff.
For, for Tura or for the city?
Well, um, yeah, for Tura.
Yeah, so this is, you know, once again, not, not city purview, this is urban renewal purview, so I'm sharing information through. That, um, staff are, manage the day to day activities in terms of working with our various partners on the ground. For example, including Rogue Retreat and that the board is really there to help direct and make policy decisions. And so that is my encouragement to attend our November board meeting. Know where this topic will be discussed in much more detail.
I guess, and I can clarify that, um, I, I never had a discussion with Rogue Retreat about. The management contract, it's not in my purview at all. Um, so I'm not, it, it might be a good idea for, um, Mr. Mallory. If he wants some more clarification on that, to go back to, um, the executive director and. Um, get some clarification about who he was referring to, because I, you know, not me. Not my purview. Um, and so, uh, Jordan, I do know that you're going to give us an update on, uh, on the management. Plans that you've been working on for Gateway coming up pretty soon. At the, is it, did you mean to say at the next tour meeting?
Um, yes, so just so you all know, it was mentioned at the last October tour meeting. That Rogue Retreat has requested to, to remove themselves as property managers for that project. Um, I am currently working with other partners to identify a smooth transition. And it will be that transition that'll be presented to the board for feedback and approval in November.
Is there, um, any other concerns that the council wants to talk about in? In that, uh, in that part of the request? Council Penamore?
Well, I mean, if you want to talk about, um, the, the accusations of ethics violations, I, I haven't seen any. Um, I think that Mr. Mallory would be advised, as you told him last time, that, that he needs to go to the state. Um, Ethics Commission and file a complaint.
Okay. Are there any other, I, I, I'm presenting this letter to the council if they want to discuss, if they want to discuss it as part of other.
And there's, as a quick clarification too, I think, you know, since the letter is on written communications. You know, technically not to be discussed, but, but what the speaker spoke about during our agenda items.
Which I can't track. Um, except for, did, did he submit a documentation to you, Jordan? I, 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 the only thing that I could track was those things that he referenced that were also in the letter. So, um, I guess, uh, if the council wants to talk about the letter, first I would say that you'd need to relax the rules. Is it, is there a motion to relax the rules? Counselor Byers?
I move to relax the council rules. In order to discuss this letter.
Their second? Okay, motion falls to the floor. Um, so there, is there any, any part of the earlier comments that anybody captured? That they would like to discuss? I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do that. Okay, um, so moving on to. Um, the second item, uh, does anybody want to take up? Uh, the Chris Luz's comments as part of an agenda item. I do want to make one comment about that if, if it, uh, if nobody objects. Um, and that is that, um, I mean, I believe that those comments were submitted to be inflammatory. For this, for the staff. And, um, the comment is, is not accurate. And, um, so what I would invite the staff to consider is if they are concerned about the comments. That, um, was relayed this evening. My, my input would be to, to follow the channels. And, um. Uh, address it with the city manager. And if there are concerns about. Grievance or anything like that, that, that it would go through the appropriate process. Uh, as the letter did. Originally, that was referred, the, the letter that Chris referred to, it went through HR and. The city attorney looked at it and the city manager advised that the, uh, resolution would be to. Um, to, to do roles and responsibilities training, which we've done. Um, and if there's any unresolved issues with the staff, um, I would hope that they would go. To the city manager and discuss them and the city manager would course a chart forward. Um, otherwise, um, you know, I suppose. Uh, the same is always true, that anybody is free to speak. You know, at their mind, um, otherwise, that's just the best I can come up with in the moment. Anybody else have any comments? I'd be happy to discuss, um, the totality of my comments with the city manager. Um, in, in, in a more appropriate fashion. And if there's any concerns that, you know, the council can certainly take the matter up. Does anybody have anything to add? Okay. Is there anything that anybody wants to agendize? Okay. The next item on the agenda, one second while I get there. Um, item number twelve is written communications. And, um, item number thirteen. It, there's written communications from Ryan Mallory and item number thirteen is a, adjournment at nine twenty four.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Getting that new microphone.
The, the time is nine sixteen. The time is nine sixteen.